Okay, we will go ahead and get started. We are going to have a very, very brief election board meeting. So we are going to reopen an election board meeting that was convened on June 15th, 2020. So I'll turn it over to Steve Ulrich.
Good morning. My name is Steve Ulrich, Director of Elections and Voters for York County. The York County Board of Elections needs to complete the preliminary certification of the June 2nd, 2020 presidential general election results, including write-in votes cast. York County had approximately 30% turnout, 88,000 out of 291,000 registered. Included in that were approximately 48,000 who came to vote at the polls, 34,000 turned in mail-in ballots, 5,800 absentee, and we had approximately 2,700 voters vote provisionally. Just for historical basis, in 2016, we had 30 voters vote provisionally. So quite a change, but we do need to complete the preliminary certification.
I'll make a motion to preliminary certify the June 2nd, 2020 municipal election results, including write-in votes cast.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? I know the Board of Commissioners made a statement at the last Commissioners' meeting, but I'll just emphasize it again, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, a lot of effort to count 34,000 mail-in ballots. And York County was the only county in South Central Pennsylvania that had all of their ballots counted, mail-in and from the polls on Election Day. So the Board of Commissioners, just again, wants to thank the Elections Department and all of the county employees who gave their time to help make that happen. So.
And I will make a motion to recess the meeting.
Do we have to vote on the motion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to recess the meeting until Monday, June 22nd, 2020, at noon.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And for those of you watching, that will be the meeting where we finalize and officially the votes. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are recessed. So now on to the Commissioners' meeting. I call to order the Commissioners' meeting of June 17th, 2020. Today, we are very glad to welcome veterans back to lead us in the pledge. Not that we haven't enjoyed having county employees lead the pledge, but thank you to veteran Don Bradley for coming today to lead us in the pledge. Okay. And I don't see Pastor Walt Howard. I know he was a little bit under the weather. So we have a backup. Mike Jefferson from Crispus Addicts will lead us in the invocation. So I'll turn it over to veteran Don Bradley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic forged stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we first have a moment of silence for the state of affairs, not only in our country, but across this world, especially with the health situation and the social unrest in our country and across the planet? So let's just have a moment of silence. Most gracious and all wise God, we come first giving you thanks and praise and glory and honor for this day, for this beautiful day that you've allowed us to gather here. We pray, oh God, that your Spirit would lead, guide, and direct this meeting of the York County Commissioners, that you would bless this county, bless this city, bless the people who reside in both, oh God, that you might get the glory, the honor, and the praise. We heal before you, oh God, and we ask healing before you for all the things that are going on around us. We pray that you would just give us spiritual insight as to the answers that need to be addressed, and even in this meeting, that things would be exposed that are happening on your behalf and on the behalf of the people of York County. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
So first up, we're joined by Kevin Tribber from the York County Economic Alliance. I think most of you are probably aware that the Board of Commissioners commissioned Recovery Task Force to look at how we managed the pandemic at a county level and then how we move forward and recover. The Economic Alliance did a webinar last week where they shared the information they're going to share today. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you all for having us today. I know everyone came in attendance to see Silas Chamberlain. I am sorry to disappoint. Unfortunately, Silas had a last-minute personal conflict and was unable to attend, so I'm going to pinch-hit and do my best. And thank you for the introduction. And I will try to move quickly through this presentation. As Commissioner Wheeler mentioned, we did present the same presentation last week. There is a recorded version of that webinar that is available on PreparedYork.com and As Commissioners had mentioned, I'm going to take you through some of the overarching recommendations that were resulting from this report. And this is very much an executive summary. If you do wish to see the full report, it is available on YokoStrong.org or PreparedYork.com/reopen. It is upwards of 200 pages with a significant amount of addendums and appendices. We do have copies in both English and Spanish and a whole host of supporting documentation. So all of that is available, but what we will review today is some of the overarching and consistent recommendations that came across very clearly from all of the committees who participated. Just a bit of a brief background on how this task force came to be. It was in early, I guess it was late April, that the county Commissioners charged a committee of subject matter experts ranging from a whole host of fields that cover the gamut of county government and all of the areas that have been impacted by this coronavirus pandemic. These individuals were asked to return a recommendation report over the course of about 30 days. And Silas Chamberlain from our organization did serve as the overall facilitator, along with Rebecca Laird from the county government. So thank you to both Silas and Rebecca for all of their work that they did to shepherd this process over the course of one month and over 30 volunteers, a host of multiple surveys, a lot of Zoom meetings and conference calls. The process was really intended to do several things: mitigate the immediate crisis that we are within, prepare for any future resurgence and future mitigation of resurgence, and build a playbook for future pandemics that hopefully we never have to pull out and utilize. But it has been often said that we do not have a playbook for what we were enduring, so this was an attempt to do just that. This did not replace any existing plans or planning efforts that other organizations or our own county government is embarking upon or reviewing. This was really intended to complement all of those efforts. How the reporting was structured, each committee was asked to look at four phases over the course of this crisis. First, beginning with sort of a look back over those first 45 days of the crisis. Look at the short term, which were really within right now, the impact mitigation. How do we mobilize all assets throughout county government and external county government as well to bring to bear resources to help mitigate this crisis? And what does resilience for our community look like in the long term? Each of the committees were to make recommendations on continuous improvement, so what could we have done better as a community and as a county? And make public policy recommendations to mitigate ongoing resurgence or future recovery. And the two overarching themes were public policy recommendations and how we can best ensure an inclusive and equitable recovery. The coordination, as I noted, was led by Silas Chamberlain and Rebecca. There are a host of staff from both county government and our own organization who helped facilitate and provide support to all of the committees. And as noted, this was not limited to a host of surveys and expanded committee efforts to try to capture as much information in a very short turnaround. And again, you can see that timeframe in the course of 30 days, we're able to bring to bear this report. This is a snapshot of the 13 committees. Both equitable and inclusive recovery and public policy, as noted, were overarching, and they had access to all of the committee reports. And we asked each of the committees to also view their work through the lens of making public policy recommendations for our Commissioners and how their respective fields of view can ensure equitable and inclusive recovery. This is a list alphabetically of all of the committee co-chairs. I won't read them by name. Some of them are in this room today. And thank you to all of those who participated. And again, this is a not limited to list. I know several committees exercised capturing additional volunteers, survey responses, and really tried to collect more information as best as possible. Some of the lessons learned, and this will sort of transition into those recommendations: rapid establishment of Incident Command Center is critical to coordinating the response and recovery efforts. We noted that the report notes that the county government did activate that Incident Command, and that did serve beneficial. So certainly building a playbook for the future, that would be a critical component. Activating a task force such as this, it became pretty clear, and that's a consistent running theme by all the committees, that there seemed to be an interest in not only activating such a task force, but keeping it in operation to some level with emergency management. And that's to help not only communication from county government, but across inter-agencies and the various scopes of view. Development and deployment of multilingual communications, this became very evident early on, but could we have done a better job to mobilize that more quickly to ensure that communication was reached by all county residents? I don't think anyone would suggest that PPP was not a critical issue, and both private, public sectors, government, education, all having limited access. So what role can the county government play going forward to build that stockpile or have channels to secure that PPE in the event of a crisis? And then how do we message to vulnerable populations or individuals who may not have had internet technology or social media? How can we do a better job communicating to all of our county residents? Some of the priority recommendations, again, if you want to go through the actual report itself, each committee had upwards of dozens of recommendations. There was a plurality of each. What we tried to do today with respect to this presentation is really highlight some of the consistent recommendations that came across from every one of these committee groups. So again, this is not to suggest that there aren't a whole host of other recommendations out there. This is just some of the high levels. Foremost, evaluate and establish a county health bureau to coordinate the county's public health response to current or future pandemics. I again thank the work of Dr. Matt Howley, who I know serves on behalf of the city's health bureau and assists the county with its strategic health planning and our healthcare providers, UPMC, Wellspan, Family First Health, just to name a few. But what role does the county play going forward in providing access to healthcare? Establish a permanent emergency response and recovery task force. Again, there seemed to be a consistent recommendation from the individuals involved that, in some version, activating this type of a task force across the community and across these various disciplines would be of benefit to the county and a benefit to our emergency management to try to continue to take a holistic, comprehensive approach to solving challenges that our county faces. Produce and distribute ongoing pandemic and crisis planning tools. Again, I think we were all scrambling early on as to how to adapt to the new normal that we were experiencing as this crisis evolved before us. So what can we do or what can the county government do in its emergency management to make some of those crisis planning tools available to the community on an ongoing basis in perpetuity? Close the digital divide in York County by investing in broadband infrastructure. Again, I don't think this is a shocker to anyone. Our vulnerabilities with respect to technology were exposed through this crisis, as were our own capacity to do Zoom meetings and all of those things. So what can we do? What can the county government do to help close that digital divide? And one of the recommendations would be to, at minimum, begin an evaluation of an engineering analysis on how to deploy that type of technology across and infrastructure across our county. Establish a permanent countywide funding pool to support small businesses and nonprofit organizations. Again, I don't think I need to go much more into detail that we know that there are resources that came to bear for our nonprofits and for our small businesses, but we know that they weren't accessed by everyone. PPP is an example. We know that there are a significant number of businesses throughout our community who did not have access to those types of program funds and along the lines of our nonprofits. We know that several on the front lines were also impeded by having the access to the resources to continue doing the services that many of them have done on the front lines. This goes, the report goes on to note that we did have some positive actions. Our United Way Community Foundation did muster the COVID Relief Fund for nonprofits. We know that some programs were created through this, but in terms of recommendations for the future, for funding, or how to allocate the CARES Act funding that the county is the recipient of, is there a way that the county can play a role in allocating funding, particularly with a concentration on those organizations or businesses serving vulnerable populations, historically disenfranchised populations, our minority business enterprises, and our Main Street businesses throughout all of our downtowns and boroughs throughout the county, who again may not have had access to some of those funding programs? This also makes the recommendation that the county may want to consider creating its own countywide community development finance institution. We have one that serves in York County right now. And even as recent as last week, with the state allocating $225 million through CDFIs, is there value to have one that exists to serve York County small businesses? And again, particularly those that may be owned by minority populations, our women business enterprises, and again, several of the Main Street communities. Ensure access to personal protective equipment. I think PPE is the acronym of 2020. And again, I don't need to belabor the limited access to it that was experienced by all. We did see several innovations occur with companies who were able to shift production to create PPE. And again, that was sort of innovation being driven by necessity. Deploy a communication strategy, again, that reaches all county residents with viewing through the lens of our vulnerable populations or those who may not have access to traditional communication channels right now. And then ultimately, as noted, advocate the task force's public policy agenda. Several recommendations are included in the report that would extend to federal, state, county, or even local policies. Again, I won't go through all of those recommendations herein, but you can see before you, again, it sort of meets the needs of the policy recommendations. And funding recommendations, again, the county is the recipient of just over $40 million in federal CARES Act funding, and we'll have to deliberate how to deploy those resources effectively. It is the hope of the task force that this task force report is utilized to make those decisions. Here you have a committee of subject matter experts across these fields making recommendations. And again, I won't go through each of these, and they are in line with the high-level recommendations. So in conclusion, we really do want to thank the county Commissioners for mobilizing the task force. We want to thank all of those task force members, many of the other volunteers throughout the community who played a significant role in mustering this type of report in a 30-day span of time, and hope that the Commissioners and county government will take these recommendations and develop a future implementation strategy. Again, none of these recommendations are obligating the Commissioners to do anything, but it is the hope that they will all be taken into account and determine the feasibility for implementation in the near future. Thank you.
We do have a fairly full agenda today, but if there's any questions that Kevin can answer, we'd be happy to open that up for any questions.
I can certainly hang around after if anyone has individual questions.
Kevin did mention the 40-plus million dollars that York County's been given, and we're certainly very thankful for that. The Board of Commissioners met yesterday and just had some preliminary discussions on the process, on how we're going to allocate that money. So I know everyone's anxious to hear who's getting what, but the three Commissioners and our county administrator want to make sure we're deliberate and making very wise decisions on who gets that money and that it's being used for the right reason. So we will certainly come back to the public after the three Commissioners have deliberated, but we are in the process of looking at that now.
Thank you again. Thank you all.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin, to you and your organization for doing this for the Commissioners. It's going to be a very big help. Thank you.
Okay, great. Item number five.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve the purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and Whitmoyer Auto Group, Mountjoy, Pennsylvania. The vehicles and amounts are listed below, and they're purchased under a PA CoStarz contract. It's two Ford Explorers for the York County Coroner's Office, and it's one Chevy Tahoe for the York County Sheriff's Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Were these, I'm sorry, were these, these were purchased in the works prior to the pandemic, correct?
Yeah, pretty much.
Ray, Mark? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Human Services Department and the Community Progress Council, Inc., York, Pennsylvania, to provide community mobilizer and case management services to the communities of hope for the Hannah Penn neighborhood for a total cost of $90,000 for the period of July 1st, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Human Resources Department and Collins Wagner Agency, Inc., York, Pennsylvania, to provide fiduciary liability insurance for a total cost of $16,600 for the period of June 18th, 2020 to June 18, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement for the new policy year between the County of York on behalf of the Human Resources Department and Murray Lancaster, Pennsylvania, to provide broker services and insurance coverage for public entity employment-related practices liability, law enforcement liability, general liability, automobile liability, and property protection claims for a total cost of $593,293 for the period of June 30th, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Mark, am I to understand, this contract renews every year, correct? What is the actual term of the contract before we submit again for bid or proposals?
I think Kristi might be able to answer that.
Good morning, Commissioners. So our insurance liability coverage that you have before you today was previously brokered for many, many years with the same broker up until last year. Last year, we went out for RFP, and I believe we received four responses. We went through an interview process with those brokers, and Murray was the service that we chose. So this is our second policy year with them, but it had been, I'd say, close to 30 years before that had gone out for RFP. So last year, we went out to RFP, and Murray was able to bring us the services that we needed. We do still keep some insurances with Collins Wagner, the prior motion that you voted on, but this service, we felt that we would get the best service from Murray.
Okay. So moving forward, I'm a big proponent of keeping business in the County of York.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to make sure that we don't exclude that moving forward and give everybody the opportunity, to York County business, to be able to provide that service.
Right.
That's why I'm asking.
I would say we probably would not do another RFP based on the work and time and the process that we have to go through until probably another two or three, possibly five years. Because it's a professional service that Murray is providing us, we actually don't have to do an RFP. It was probably more so a request for qualifications and things like that, but we felt the need after that many years of being with the same broker that we go out and do that. So this was our opportunity to do it last year. We just got in with Murray in a one-year timeframe, based on what they've been able to do. I think our insurance was closely looked at this year, and we were able to get the best prices that we could for the various levels of coverage that we have.
Kristi, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't this last, the quote that, the RFP that went out, did that include for risk management? Because I thought that prior to that, the county had its, did its own risk management?
That's been several years that we haven't had a risk management service. So we have used Murray for risk management. That more so falls under workers' comp rather than under these liability services. It's kind of a married service, but we have been using Murray for the risk management side of it for many years.
And I would just add, as somebody who has been here over the years, that there was a lot of consternation and discussion when we through this process. Because I too agree, and I think we all agree here, and we've all said this as county Commissioners, it's nice to keep business within the local York community, but this was done because of cost considerations and availability of obvious services that were far more extensive with the bigger company. So it wasn't an easy decision, but I agree with Ron. You know, anytime we have the ability to look at a contract, and not every year, because it doesn't make financial sense to go out and RFP every year. Usually have a contract for a couple of years, but it's something that we will continue to look at as Commissioners.
Yeah, you'll see also in September, the cyber liability insurance is also still with Collins Wagner. So we did not remove all of our insurances. We do use Collins Wagner, a local organization, for those two insurances, the fiduciary you just voted on, and then our cyber liability as well.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Kristi.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 10.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and ICE Detention Compliance and Removals Immigration and Custom Enforcement Office to provide an increase in the bed day rate to $180 and a guaranteed minimum payment for 500 detainees for one year from June 1st, 2020 to June 1st, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I'll make just a comment as president of the prison board for the past 12 years and in my 13th year. This was seriously reviewed at the prison board meeting, and we are now in contract negotiations with ICE about a future contract. This is an extension of an original contract where we decided that the bed day rate should have been increased because of cost occurred at the prison, and also wanted to guarantee a 500 minimum. Our prison ICE detainee population is down based on current situations in the country with the border and everything. Today, I think we had 298 inmates from the ICE detainees, so this guaranteed minimum will help York County in its financial situation with the prison.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services and JG Contracting Company, Carnegie, Pennsylvania, for antenna line relocations for the East Manchester Water Tank for a total cost of $83,880 for the period of June 18th, 2020 to August 1st, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And Mark, could you just talk about what we're doing here?
Yes. What's happening is York Water Company, who allows us to place our 911 equipment on their water tank free of charge, is doing some repairs and maintenance to the towers. And in order to complete the work, the equipment needed to be removed and basically reinstalled while the work's being done. So they're taking one antenna down at a time, and there's always two sources of signal for the communications, emergency communications, but they'll take one tower down, or one antenna down at a time, so there's always a means of emergency communications for that area of the county.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 12.
I make a motion to approve JD Ekman contract time extension request and authorize the signature of the President Commissioner for the rehabilitation of County Bridge Number 274 Singer Road over the Heritage Rail Trail in New Freedom Borough, extending the completion date by 88 days to September 9th, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I see John's here. John, we've been talking about this bridge for a long time, you know, what's happening down there. I know we've had some problems. We had some contracts needed with some neighbors, but where are we at?
Well, we had secured all the easements, and we had some additional work that we found when we took the bridge apart. This is the end. As a matter of fact, I think it's going to be This is the end, as a matter of fact, I think it's going to be completed very shortly. This legitimized the contract time for the contractor. He needed more time because of the work that happened. So in all fairness to him, it's at no cost. So it's another, it's one of the five projects we're winding down for the county.
Okay, good.
And this one should be wound down very shortly.
Any questions for John? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 13.
I make a motion to approve an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Treasurer's Office and the Mount Wolf Borough and Northeastern School District to fulfill the duties of the tax collector for the collection of real estate and school taxes effective May 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And Barb, a question, is this a resignation or the, what happened with the tax collector?
Sorry, couldn't find the button. This is a vacancy. A tax collector had resigned and we were contacted. We have been collecting the county municipal taxes for Mount Wolf Borough, but the school district needed a collector and so we will be collecting. And actually, it should be December 31st, 2021.
I was going to say, because the tax collector's doesn't run until next year, so this will fulfill the vacancy until the next tax collector election.
Exactly.
So I will make a motion to amend the date from May 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021.
Second.
So I have a motion that's been amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 14.
Motion to approve the reappointment of Heather M. Krieger, Brokerage Advisor, York County, to the Housing and Community Development Loan Committee for a three-year term beginning August 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2023.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 15.
Motion to approve the agreement for assignment of sewage capacity reservation between the County Parks Foundation Charitable Trust Incorporated, a signer, and the County of York, a signee, to assign and transfer the one EDU of sewer capacity for use with the property located at 946 Valley Road, Springfield Township. The annual cost for the one EDU is approximately $880.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second.
And I'd ask our successor to explain this resolution or motion.
This, this motion is related to the donation of a 26-acre parcel of property from the Parks Charitable Trust. They acquired that property in 2019. They then donated it to the county earlier this year in 2020. Along with that property, there were a couple of EDUs, which are sewer capacity, which, after discussing this last year when the charitable trust was going through that process, the county decided that there were two EDUs available, that one would be sufficient. So if at some point down the road, we would like to improve that property, perhaps there is a Greenway, Hollow Creek Greenway area if we wanted to maybe place bathrooms located there. And so Springfield Township has to agree to that transfer from the charitable trust to the county, even though the property had just transferred in February. So this really is just an agreement between the authority, the charitable trust, and the county to transfer one of those EDUs to allow us to have reserved sewer capacity at Springfield Township, should we need to use that in the future.
And this is at Nixon Park?
It's adjacent, the 26 acres is adjacent to Nixon Park.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 16.
Motion to approve the execution of the letter appointing the Community Progress Council Incorporated, York County's Community Action Agency, as the approved and official applicant for the funding for the CARES Rental Relief Program, which is required part of the grant application, which is filed on behalf of the Human Services Department.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. I don't see Jessica here. Just for those of you, there is a Pennsylvania CARES Rent Relief Program and this, these funds may be used to assist eligible households with up to six months of rent incurred between March 1st, 2020 and December 30th, 2020. So with the maximum amount of assistance provided per leasing per month of $750. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 17.
Motion to approve the County of York to enter into a grant agreement on behalf of the Human Services Department and the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture to administer the state food purchase program for York County.
Our second motion.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 18.
Motion to approve Resolution 2020-17 authorizing the issuance by the York County Industrial Development Authority of up to $325,000 of tax-exempt financing to Alexander P. and Anissa R. Canty for the purpose of acquiring a farm located at 510 Windsor Road, York Township, excuse me, York, Windsor Township, York County, Pennsylvania, as authorized under federal tax law as a qualifying first-time farmer.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second, and I know Kenneth is with us today. Did you want to make any comments?
Kenneth, why don't you just, this is such a good program and we've done these over the, over the years for first-time qualifying farm buyers. And just maybe so the public, even people watching on TV would know this availability and how they can apply for it.
Thank you, thank you Commissioners. The Next Generation Farmer Program is authorized under federal law, but it is implemented in a partnership between New York County Industrial Development Authority and local lenders. It is a way for qualifying first-time farmers to access a loan at a reduced interest rate and the IDA serves as the conduit for it. It is a private sector loan. The borrower is on the hook for it, so it does not increase the indebtedness of the county or the IDA.
Good. And how does somebody make application? Through you or?
They would, they would call me and I'd be happy to talk to them about the eligibility requirements and perhaps this program or another program may be, may be applicable.
Okay.
And Kenneth can be reached at the York County Economic Alliance.
I can, I'm wearing my IDA hat today, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 19.
Motion to approve Resolution 2020-18 authorizing the issuance by the York County Industrial Development Authority of up to $552,000 of tax-exempt financing to Eric and Bethany Good for the purpose of acquiring a farm located at 4840 Beesecker Road, Thomasville, Dover Township, York County, Pennsylvania, as authorized under federal tax law as a qualifying first-time farmer.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. This is similar to the motion that we just voted on. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 20.
Motion to approve the Tax Refund Register 2020-10 authorizing payment of York County Real Estate Tax refunds totaling $1,877.12.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 21.
Motion to approve the Check Register for the week of June 10th, 2020 totaling $2,465,934.16.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 22.
Motion to approve the Check Register for the week of June 17th, 2020 totaling $16,895,314.92.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second.
And Mark, this is a big number for one week. What's the reason?
We had about two and a half, the number includes about two and a half million dollars in debt service, about $1.8 million in tax claim monies that are being paid out to the municipalities and school districts, and then over $7 million in jointer, York County, York Adams County jointer payments for capitation costs for MHIDD.
And that's something we have every quarter or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 23. No executive session since our last Commissioners' meeting. We're going to move on to other business. We do have a special guest here with us today, Felicia Dell from the Planning Commission. I just wanted to share a few words before Felicia speaks. You know, as a follow-up to the announcement our district attorney shared last week, on today's Salary Board agenda, the Board will vote on the creation of a new position entitled Chief Opportunity Officer/Trainer. This action is a necessary step forward in county government as provider of services and as one of the largest employers in York County. Not surprisingly, our workplaces tend to mirror the social, cultural dynamics at play in our lives outside of work. Having been a part of a multinational enterprise for over two decades, I've witnessed firsthand that diversity in the workplace is an asset for both the business of the organization and their employees. It also has the capacity to foster innovation, creativity, and empathy in ways that a homogeneous work environment seldom does. Yet, it takes careful nurturing and deliberate action to unleash the potential of this invaluable asset. If approved, the Chief Opportunity Officer/Trainer will report directly to our Deputy Administrator, Kristi Bixler, who's a member of the Commissioners' Executive Management Team. The position will be responsible for developing and maintaining a robust diversity, equity, and inclusion program, as well as enhancing the county's training initiatives. Investing in and developing employees is critical to the effectiveness and strength of an organization. This position has been in the development since January. We've collaborated with many of the community leaders who are here with us today, who have a vested interest in the success of this initiative. Our ability to roll this out sooner was delayed as we had to pivot and address issues related to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'd like to pause and commend our county administrator, Mark Durr. County funds for this position that weren't originally identified through the budget process are set aside and reserved for these types of situations. It's because of the proactive, fiscally responsible actions that Mark has taken during the budgeting process that we are able to propose this position. There's a lot of work Mark and many other people do at the county in the budgeting process. And so, again, I just wanted to pause and thank Mark because, again, if it was not for his fiscal stewardness, we would not be able to present this position at Salary Board today. It is beyond clear that we can play a significant role in shaping our county's future and ensuring that we are building a county that welcomes all individuals of all backgrounds. We are one York County, a melting pot and microchasm of America. We are the eighth-largest county in our Commonwealth with a growing population that continues to become more diverse. We are committed to listening, learning, and being a part of the solution. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Felicia, who's going to discuss some initiatives at the Planning Commission around diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hello?
Good morning, thank you. I think this is the first time I've been before this board at one of your formal meetings. So I'm just going to spend a few minutes giving a little bit of background before I dive into the topic at hand today. As the Director of the York County Planning Commission, I lead our agency in meeting various county requirements for comprehensive planning and administering various other county programs related to transportation, housing, community development, and other services that the county provides. And in this capacity, our agency is actually overseen by two different and very important boards. First of all, the County Board of Commissioners, as you created the County Planning Commission in 1959, and no, I wasn't here then when that occurred, you assign various programs for us to administer on behalf of the residents of York County. But you also appoint a Board of Planning Commissioners that oversee the day-to-day work that we do. We meet with them on a monthly basis. And in the role that the Planning Commissioners play, they serve as the Planning Commission to the York County Board of Commissioners, similar to what a municipal planning commission plays to their local elected body. These two boards over the years have done a lot of collaborative efforts on many initiatives. Sometimes they come from recommendations that the Planning Commission makes to the Board of Commissioners and sometimes they're through assignments that the Board of Commissioners makes to the Planning Commission. And we have a great spirit of cooperation and it's been in that spirit of collaboration and cooperation that Commissioner Wheeler initiated some conversations around diversity, equity, and inclusion before the COVID crisis hit. So we were talking about what is it that the Planning Commission has done over the years? What do we do in the programs that we administer for the county around diversity, equity, and inclusion? And then a lot of those conversations got hijacked because we had the shelter-in-place orders. Once we turned into becoming a green county, we were able to resume those conversations. One of the things that you might not realize is we have a mission statement and the mission statement for the Planning Commission is to guide sustainable development and preservation to improve the quality of life in York County. Now, that's a very broad statement and in its broadness, it's inherently inclusive. But when people think about the Planning Commission and some of the work they do, too often, they think of that inclusiveness around the physical landscape of the county. They think about the work that we do in guiding development to appropriate physical locations in the county and they think about the roads and bridges that we recommend funding and the work that we do with affordable housing developers to build bricks-and-mortar buildings. And what, what they might not realize is at the start of all of the planning work we do is we're looking at the population that we serve and what are the needs of our residents and what are the gaps in the services that they're receiving? And how can we better meet the needs of all of our residents all across the county? So even though you might think of like a bricks-and-mortar organization, we're really inherently serving the residents, all the residents of York County. And at one point in time, the York County Planning Commission had what we called a human resources planner, and that was before the term human resources was related to hiring practices. And that position was really focused on identifying the trends in our population, identifying the shifts in the makeup of our communities, and really looking at the needs of our residents on a holistic basis and making sure that our funding decisions and the recommendations that we were providing to the county commissioners were not biased in any way, but that they were inclusive and equitable. And over the years, with different budget cuts and, and different retirements that we had, that position was not retained over time. And even though we didn't have that position, we did have a lens of environmental justice that we looked at, our programs that we administer for the county. So even though we didn't have somebody focusing our efforts on that, we really did try and maintain an environmental justice lens on the different programs that we administer and the recommendations that we make and the planning that we do. What we've realized is that all too often, though, the environmental justice lens that we take is more in response to a specific program. And what we'd like to do is reinstitute that position under a more current title, a diversity, equity, and inclusion community planner, that would reinstitute the focus on making sure that as we do our programs and we do our planning on a countywide basis, we're taking a holistic approach to diversity, equity, and inclusion in everything that we do, not just to meet program requirements, but that we're really incorporating it into all of the community planning we do. My vision for this position is that someday, we wouldn't need a special initiative around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that we wouldn't need to highlight a special focus that we have diversity, equity, and inclusion in the work that we do, but that it's just an inherent part of how we do our work and that it's just embedded in what we do on a day-to-day basis. So I am proposing that we reinstitute this, this position under a new title, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Community Planner. I'll be proposing that to the York County Planning Commission with a job description. The position in its broadest sense would be responsible for leading development and implementation of a countywide plan that promotes equity, diversity, and inclusion in the policies, programs, and practice. in the policies, programs, and practices that we undertake, and that it would become an element of the county's comprehensive plan. It would be presented before the county commissioners for adoption as an element of the county comprehensive plan, thereby making it county policy for community planning across all of York County. As we propose this position to the July, on the July agenda of the Planning Commission and the accompanying job description, I'm anticipating that we'll have a lot of discussion, but it would be supportive discussion. I've had initial conversations with the planning commission members, and some of them are actually saying, why isn't the county doing more around this? And they feel like maybe we've been a little late to the game in trying to propose this position. So I'm anticipating a vigorous and supportive discussion, and I would invite the Board of Commissioners to attend, to participate in that discussion. But we're looking forward to the support of the board as we move forward and advance this position to achieve diversity, equity, and inclusion, not only in the work, but across the county.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, just for the public's information, this is actually not a county position under the county auspices, it's under the Planning Commission.
Correct.
So you will do the hiring process. And I guess for the public and to understand, what type of person will you be looking for? Because you'll obviously be putting a job description together-
Right.
-and putting that out, and I want to make sure we get some good, qualified, excellent applicants that you're looking for. So what type of person are you looking for?
Well, first of all, let me state that we do, even though we are an agency within county government, we do have a separate hiring process, but we try to mirror, as much as we can, the county's policies, and we are affirmative action hiring agency. But we would be looking for somebody that has a college degree or some sort of advanced degree in social justice, environmental justice, public administration. If they have a planning background, that's fine, but we're really looking with somebody that has some education and experience working on social engagement, community engagement around social justice, to help our work, advance our work, but then also take that message out to the communities that we work with as well.
And in your organizational structure, have you thought about where this position will be located, or will be in a separate area department itself?
So we have two proposals, and that'll be part of the discussion with the Planning Commission at the July meeting, but there's two options. One would be to make it a senior position within the long-range planning division because it would be taking a more holistic, big-picture look at the county. The other option would be to create it as a standalone division that might be able to grow over time, if there's more and more work in that area to do. So there's two options that we'll be presenting as part of the discussion in July.
For those of you watching that aren't aware, I think Felicia did talk about it, and the Planning Commission really has a broad scope and sphere of influence. The reentry initiative and that position for reentry is housed in the Planning Commission, as well as the position for Community Action for Recovering Divergent, the CARD program. So I think it's great and forward-thinking. I know Felicia's done a lot of benchmarking on what other organizations are doing across the country. I'm sure she'll share that at the July meeting, but I commend the Planning Commission for stepping forward. I think that this role and the role that is being proposed at the salary board for county government certainly will have to be collaborative-
Yes.
-in nature, but I think two potentially great steps forward for our community, so.
All right. We're looking forward to your support and involvement in the discussion, so thanks for your time this morning.
We have a period of public comment. Looking for Mark. Sure. Carrie, you can come to the podium.
Yeah, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank the county commissioners and certainly Felicia Dell for all your hard work and considerations for these diversity positions. As everyone knows, it's been quite a long time since we've been looking for policy and public policy direction as it relates to diversity, inclusion in the county. And as someone indicated earlier, I think this is a giant step forward. So I just wanted to just take the opportunity to thank the commissioners, thank Felicia and the Planning Commission for these considerations. Thank you so much.
The other comment?
Good morning. For those who don't know, my name appeared on the agenda, and so I am the late Dr. Larry-
You better thank Mike Jefferson, he phoned you out.
Oh, really?
He did.
Get back up. First of all, let me say to Madam President, thank you for being true to your commitment. When you ran for public office, you ran on a platform of diversity and inclusion, and you've stayed true to that. So I applaud you, and I commend you. In this climate, our nation is grappling with what that means. And for 400 years plus, this land has been grappling with what that means. My name is Dr. Walthar. As I said, I've worked, I've been about five years. I work with the Confronting Racism Coalition. I've worked with the task force that, I almost called them representative, Kevin, he was representative when I first got here. And I was able to work with the various components of this community. I am proud of this day. I think it sets a tone for not only our community, but our Commonwealth and even our country. And I just hope that this platform will be a model for others to consider and to further. I am grateful for all the partners that we have in this room. And many times with my white brothers and sisters, I remember having a conversation, and I had a conversation, and one of them said, you know, I don't see color. I want you to see color. Because in seeing my color, you can appreciate the diversity of what we bring to this community. York is changing, and not only are we changing culturally, and not only are we changing in terms of our color, but we're changing in terms of our content. We got a melting pot of people from Florida, from DC, from Philadelphia, from Baltimore, all moving here. And I think to have this platform at this time sets us once again above the curve to make York a better place for equity and inclusion for all. To the council, to the president, job well done. Thank you.
I'm just going to echo with Dr. Walthar.
Please yourself for the-
Yes, Sal Godames. I have an organization called York Excel, and I just want to commend Julie Wheeler as well for her vision on this. I think a lot of times, those of us that are in community work, trying to convince organizations and people in power, people with money, that neighborhoods matter and that the people in neighborhoods matter in York City, and it's mostly black and brown faces. And I think it just gets tiring, I think, to continue having to make that argument that, you know what, we do matter out here. The lives of the people in our neighborhoods are important. So what was refreshing, I think, in this instance was that I didn't have to do anything. You reached out to me about this, and I think that just speaks to your heart and to the authenticity of your vision of inclusion in both York City and York County. So again, I commend you. Thank you so much.
My name is Sandy Walker. It's a pleasure to be here, and I just wanted to say in regards to the two positions that have been mentioned, what better time to do this than now? Given the climate of our country, given the climate of our county, and growing up here in York County, and particularly York City, to see the diversity that has progressed over the past decade, I can go back to when I was in high school and being an athlete, playing basketball, and being the only team in our county with color. And to see it now as a coach, when I go to games and I see the diversity that has come that Dr. Walthar had mentioned in regards to York County, we have so many people that are moving into the county. And to see the leadership that York County Commissioners is taking during this climate is exciting, it's appreciated, it's well overdue, and as an African-American woman, it makes me have more hope in what I'm seeing for this county and in the direction that we're going to move. So I thank you for your work, I thank you for your commitment, thank you for your dedication, and any help that I can be, I am here and willing to work. Thank you.
Thank you. So you all heard her say she's willing to help, so we're on the record.
Well, Eva Moroz is here next to me. I'm Delma Rivera, and we wanted to come up together as Latino leaders here in York County. This is beyond huge, and we want to thank the York County Commissioners because this is not something that just came about right now. You've been true to your word about wanting to have diversity and inclusion in our community and to move forward with this. What Sandy said, the word that I have is hope, because as I see our community becoming more diverse, this is something that we need, and this is huge, and I think it sends a very loud message as to where our community is moving. So I am just very, very grateful, and I'm here to help in any way that I can.
And I personally would like to thank the county commissioners for their leadership on this, as well as the York County Planning Commission. YCA had a great deal of work and interest in this position also. Thank you for your principle-oriented leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bill Janovich. I'm privileged to serve as the Chair of the York County Economic Alliance and also as Chief Human Resources Officer for Kinsley Enterprises. You know, I was thinking about some of the words recently by a great community leader, Mr. Bobby Simpson, and thinking about our history. You know, we have an incredibly rich, complex, complicated history, and today is certainly a historic moment. You know, you've provided us an opportunity, you've made an investment, you've honored a commitment. But the reality is the hard work is now in front of us, and it's truly what we will do together as a community of all the residents who love this community, that make this our home, we raise our families, we build our economic prosperity, and we've got a blessing with this investment to really make a difference, to ensure that York embraces a new chapter in its history, is a more welcoming, inclusive community. There's going to be bumps in the road. I think we've got to be honest about that. We've got to appreciate those differences, we've got to have the honest dialogue, and what you've provided to us with the Planning Commission is the opportunity to do some wonderful work together, to learn from each other, to grow, to inspire a future. I can't sit here and say as a grandfather exactly what the future will hold, but what I can say, I have a commitment to make this community a better place, not only for today, but for my little grandsons who can grow and appreciate a different world, a more welcoming world, and one that all of us can absolutely be very, very proud of. So thank you for honoring your commitment, thank you for your leadership. Now the work's on all of us together. Thank you.
Any further public comment? I did just want to pause and, you know, thank Commissioner Hope, Commissioner Smith, County Administrator Mark Dur, and Kristi Bixler for working together in a collaborative manner. I think, you know, when the new board took over, obviously two new commissioners, one Commissioner who's been around for a little while, but, you know, looking at the organization and how we make it more effective, and lots of good, healthy discussions, but it was really a collaborative effort between the commissioners, Mark and Kristi. So just thanks to, thank you to them. On the agenda is a motion to adjourn, but we are actually gonna, I'm going to ask for a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting to June 22 at 10:00 a.m. We just want to make sure that if there's anything involved with the CARES funding that we would have to make a motion on, that we allow ourselves the ability to do that. And since the election board is going to meet at that same time, we might as well be efficient, so.
So you said June 22?
June 22 at 10:00 a.m.
I'll make a motion to recess this meeting until June 22, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. in the morning.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and we will recess. Thank you. Sorry. Commissioner Smith caught me. Recess.
Recess.
Recess. Recess. So we will move on to the salary board.
I'll make a motion to approve the position, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements, or as set forth in York County Employee Handbook, or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and Row Office, with no additional benefits or concessions unless otherwise noted, as stated in the internal salary board detail. Department 1, Commissioners; Department 24, Human Resources; Department 32, Adult Probation; Department 35, Health Choices; Department 70, Emergency 911; Department 94, Mosquito Disease Control; and Row Office, Department 52, The Corner.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Micho, I got a question. If we're in disagreement with one of the department proposals, does this get voted on, does it have to be voted on as a whole entire package, or can it be taken out by one?
You can separate it out. You can separate out the one that you have, and you can vote the-
Right, so is that one that-
Separate vote, and then we need to do a-
Okay.
Make sure that-
So we could do that, yeah?
Okay, I'd like to do that with the first item, Department 01.
Okay.
So we'll take a roll call vote for item number one. So Greg?
Aye.
Commissioner Hope?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Wheeler, in favor? So that passes. So now we'll have a motion on the remaining positions on the salary board. Is that right?
And I make a second to that motion to the rest of the salary board.
So do we need to do a roll call vote for that as well?
No.
Okay.
Oh, we do?
Greg?
Aye.
Hope?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yeah. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the salary board meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry, none. We are adjourned, and it looks like the retirement board. So I call the meeting of the retirement board for June 17 to order.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on May 20, 2020, as submitted.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number three.
Make a motion to include the following vested individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Denise Morales, prison.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four.
Make a motion to include the following individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Jane R. Schneider, prison. Claude Stably II, coroners.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five.
Make a motion to include the following alternate payee on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Michelle Castle.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Were there any executive sessions?
There were no executive sessions.
Okay. We have a period of public comment for the retirement board. Okay, and motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry, none. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for sticking with us today. It was a longer-than-normal meeting, but had a lot to cover. So thank you and be well.